This is a public hearing and we are the Putnam County Planning Commission. We are the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this committee will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting on June 27, 2023. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the commission and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. This motion will be voted on by the commission members and will become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination regarding the application. Before we begin, is there anyone on the commission that needs to tell us of any ex parte communication on either any of these cases? Seeing none, then our first case is REZ 23-00003.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is rezoning application, REZ 2300003. It is a rezoning application from the applicant, David Pepper, regarding a 1.26 acre vacant parcel located at 330 South Highway 17. And the rezoning request is to rezone a 1.26 acre parcel from Residential 2 to Commercial General C3 to allow for boat service and repair. The 1.26 acre vacant parcel is located along South Highway 17, directly south of the Putnam County Fairgrounds. The surrounding uses are predominantly commercial in nature. The applicant recently purchased this parcel and the parcel directly across the street or across Highway 17 to the west, which was rezoned to C3 in 2019 to allow for dry storage of boats. The current zoning designation in Residential 2 does not allow for the requested uses for boat repair facility, and the rezoning to C3 would allow for that use. This portion of South Highway 17 corridor, as I mentioned, is predominantly commercial uses falling within the C2 and C3 zoning designations. Here is an aerial of the parcel in question. To the west there, a little northwest is the parcel that's been, that was recently rezoned to C3 to allow for the dry storage of boats. Future land use along this corridor is urban service and commercial. There is commercial to the north and to the west of the parcel, to the east as a residential subdivision, which is common along the 17 and 19 corridors, where you have commercial and commercial uses operating adjacent to residential plotted subdivisions. As mentioned, the land use is currently urban service along this area, which encourages infill development in areas where infrastructure is available, which in this instance it is. Per policy, A193A1, urban service land use allows for neighborhood commercial and community commercial uses, which this use falls into those categories. Per Section 45-83 of the Land Development Code, the C3 zoning designation allows for the boat service and repair use by right aligns with the urban service virtual land use designation classification. The applicant will be required to provide a 10-foot wide Class A vegetative buffer between surrounding residential uses, as well as perimeter buffering along all property lines and vehicle use areas. The type of buffering required would be determined by the Development Review Committee at the time of plan submittal. And additional buffering may be required if, depending on the site plan provided. But staff is recommending approval of the zoning designation change from Residential 2 to C3 as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with all applicable procedures and requirements of the Land Development Code. And I believe the applicant is here and staff is here to answer any further questions as well.
Any questions for the staff at this point? Would the applicant like to come forward?
David Pepper.
State your name and address, Mr. Pepper. I know it's in our staff.
I live at 340 Oak Ridge Trail, St. Augustine.
Okay. Anything you want to tell us?
Well, the, I was thinking you were going to give me questions. Now, as you all know, we're developing the dry boat storage facility there, and the whole area is now starting to gel. We would like to have the ability in the future to go across the street and do something marine-related across the street. As you know, Captain Joe's has just sold and those people are getting cranked up on their stuff. So it's, it's all kind of a commercial area at this point, and we all are very complimentary to each other. By that, I mean Captain Joe's will, you know, get people from our boat facility and we'll be drawing people around. So to me, it is, it looks like a good use of the property, good use of the facility. It'll provide employment and investment in the county and tax revenue. So, any questions?
Will you intend to be doing a lot of outboard motor testing in the open over there? The reason I ask the question is, I know it can be quite noisy, and I'm just wondering if you considered any way to mitigate that sound between you and the residents behind you?
I don't know. You could mitigate it by putting up, you know, a tall wooden fence, you know, it seems like there'd be other possibilities. Right now, we don't have an exact plan for the facility there. We're just now seeking permission so we can plan something in the future, which we would present to the Development Review Commission for their approval. But we would be a good neighbor. Oh, yes, of course, yes. We're, you know, we, we're going to work with the people in the neighborhood. We're going to be good stewards of the property. We're not going to do anything to upset people on purpose, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for this proposal? How about anyone out there that would like to speak against this proposal? Do I have any cards, Jenny? No. Okay, seeing none, we'll call back for discussion and a motion. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vice chair votes aye, so all, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That'll go to the County Commission on, what did I say, June the 27th for the next, for their approval. The next case is REZ 23-00004.
Good afternoon, once again, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Searley, Planning and Development Services. This is a rezoning as well. The applicant, Willie Gilyard, wishes to rezone a .56 acre vacant parcel located at 907 North State Road 19. The rezoning request is to rezone from Commercial Retail C2 to Commercial General C3 to allow for the parking of heavy vehicles. The .56 acre vacant parcel is located along North Highway 19, directly north of Reed Street. The area consists of predominantly commercial uses surrounding the parcel, with the exception of the residential uses directly east. As I had mentioned earlier, a lot of these commercial businesses along the corridors do about residential plotted subdivisions. The current zoning designation of Commercial 2 does not allow for the parking of heavy machinery and would be required to rezone to Commercial General 3. This portion of the North Highway 19 corridors, predominantly commercial uses, falling with this, in the C2 and C3 industrial light zoning categories further to the south along at the intersection there. Here is an aerial of the, of the proposed lot. As you can see, the, it abuts the residential neighborhood to the east, and further across the highway there is predominantly commercial uses and some industrial to the south. The future land use is currently commercial, which is in alignment with the proposed zoning district. Zoning along this area is predominantly commercials or C2 and C3, as well as across the street to the west. To the north there is the city of Palaca. That zoning there is, I believe, is commercial retail, which is equivalent to our C2, I believe. So the current future land use is commercial, which is compatible with all commercial zoning designations, including the proposed C3 zoning. Per policy, A193A5, commercial land use allows for neighborhood commercial and community commercial uses, which this, this request falls into. The proposed C3 zoning district is now allowed for, or C2, I'm sorry, the existing commercial C2 zoning district is now allowed for heavy machinery parking. Heavy vehicle parking is not a listed use within the Land Development Code. However, our code does allow for the director to determine if it's, what kind of classification it would fall into if it's not specified within the code. If it's similar to another use, we look at it as such. So heavy vehicle sales and service are allowable uses as a special use within the C3 zoning. However, it's determined by staff that that's a more intense use than just the parking of heavy vehicles. Therefore, it was determined that if we, that the applicant rezoned to C3, that would suffice and it would be allowable use. The applicant would be required to provide incompatibility buffers between the surrounding residential uses and any other compatible, incompatible use. Perimeter buffer would be required along all vehicle use areas and along the perimeter of the property. And the exact type of buffering would be determined at, once we receive engineered drawings at the Development Review Committee stage. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning designation from Commercial C2 to Commercial General C3 as it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with all applicable procedures and requirements of the LDC, with the added condition that there'd be no repair and sales or service onsite. It's strictly just for the parking of heavy vehicles. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here to answer any questions as well as staff.
Okay, any questions for staff on this one? Would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Willie Gilyard. I currently live at 2102 Carr Street in Palaca. So I purchased this, I got a trucking company. So I purchased the property because, you know, everybody's kind of pretty much kicking truck drivers off, out of, you know, certain areas in Palaca. So we're kind of having a hard time parking, finding somewhere to park. So the current place that I was parking, they decided that they didn't want trucks parking there no more, so I had to move. So I purchased the property, I cleaned it off. I was having a couple issues with different people in the community because of the trucks. So I've tried to, you know, do everything under the code to, you know, commodimate, you know, try to help the situation. So I, on the north end of the property, I put a six-foot fence, privacy fence. I'm in the process of putting the buffers and all that up. I spent a lot of money on the ground to keep the dust down. So I, I did a couple of different things to try to, you know, help the situation because of some of the people in the community was having problems with the trucks. So I hope I kind of calmed the issue down a little bit, but I really appreciate it if you give us this opportunity to, you know, to have these trucks in the area, because it's really a pain for me, my friends, different people I know that got trucks to, for parking. So, and I know back in the days when, I guess, like trains, you know, I stayed in a small area, Satsuma, Florida, and the train used to come by every day. It's like rad in that, rad in the community. But people don't understand that this is how we get our goods, you know? I mean, you might have to deal with a little something sometime, but if you think about it, mostly everything that we put on our back, from the food we eat, it all comes from the trucks. So if y'all have got any questions, I'm happy to answer. I'm kind of nervous because I never had to, you know, talk before a board, but it's been a journey for me.
You may.
If that's, if that's, if that's something that I need to do, then, you know, we'll, we'll be fine with that. That'd be, that'd be fine.
Went by there, it looks good.
Yes, sir.
Looks a lot better.
We've, we've done, tried to do a lot to try to improve it and make the area look good, and I think it's, I think I'm being a good example for the community, the guys in the back, the community behind me, because a lot of guys coming up asking me for jobs, what can they do to get their CDLs? So there's, there's actually a good, a good, it feels like a good environment with me being there to help out the community with the guys that's looking for a way to, something to do, you know? It's, I think it'll really serve its purpose in the community in the long run.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilyard.
Thank you. Excuse my nervousness, I'm just.
You're fine.
I never had to go before a board or go through.
We're really not intimidating.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for this proposal? How about against? Is there anyone to speak against it? Okay, have, have you filled out a card, ma'am? Okay. All right. Ms. Chambliss. Dr. Chambliss.
Good afternoon. Dr. Brenda Miller-Chambliss, 122 Shadowlon Street in Palatka, and heading up along with Ms. Coulson, the recently formed Shadowlon Heights Neighborhood Committee. Once again, as an African American, I am pro entrepreneurship. I'm excited about that, all the good things that happened, but also being aware of the law and things that happened. When this property was being cleared, we looked for and waited for signs to be posted what the property was going to be, what it needed to be zoned for to have an opportunity to come in and speak about it. That never happened. We began calling and asking questions, listen, we're seeing work going on at the end of our street. Who is doing it? What's happening with it? We made many calls, got very few responses. Before the dust and all of those things, we've called Tallahassee, we've checked with DOT who said they only had a early application that came in 2022, but it was not completed. And as far as DOT is concerned, that property is not occupied. We, and what was being said, yeah, people are probably coming up, but also it's opened up our neighborhood right behind to prostitutes now walking in off the street. It's brought in a lot of inner traffic, and the question that someone asked about traffic coming in, no, it comes right from there through our neighborhood for kids, grandkids, people who are playing, elderly are sitting outside. It's trucks coming through our house. We don't live on Carr Street, we live right on that street in that area. We're not happy, we are not going for it. Many of the people that could not be here today, we are representing them, and we are going to fight this because we are not happy about it. It is not helpful to our community, it is not helping our neighborhood, it is not a benefit to us. They are loud, they're noisy, they come through our neighborhood, they're cracking up the sidewalks. These are county sidewalks, y'all put them there. These are county roads. It's not maintaining, and so no, we are absolutely against it. And what we don't understand is this, I tried to get a shed put up on my own property, and I couldn't get approval, and I went through it the right way. And y'all wouldn't, county wouldn't approve my shed going on my property that I asked for permission for. But here, a gentleman is allowed to go out, cut, build, put things in place, and not have the, have zoning, not have approval? I don't think that is fair, I don't think that's correct. And as I said, today, many of the people in our area, they're second and third generation, they're elderly, and then those that are working could not be here, but the Shadowlon Heights Neighborhood Committee has formed, and we are in total opposition to this. If anyone has a question for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
If the, if it was arranged to where those trucks wouldn't be able to actually drive through your neighborhood?
No.
But, but if they access off of, that wouldn't work either?
No, sir. That's not going to work. No, sir.
Is it more a noise issue or a safety issue, or what in your mind?
It's a noise issue, it's a safety issue, and it's a right issue. How are you able, does not the zoning say before you're able to do and have something built in place, are you not supposed to have zoning approval first? Is that not correct? Exactly. It's not only, I'm sorry, sir, but it's not only about the zoning. If you're building a carport in Palaca, you know you have to get a permit. There's, there's not proper permitting, and it was not, you know, before you have to do anything, you have to get a permit. Everyone knows that, and the proper procedures were not put in place first. We live there. When we go home, we deal with the noise, we deal with the people, we deal with the traffic, we deal with the safety, and we don't want it. These are our homes, and whatever we need to do, we are willing to fight this. We're not happy with it. And once again, I'm happy, you know, my husband drove a truck for National Freight. Eighteen years ago, he drove his truck through there three times, and the sheriff came out and parked it right on my dad's property, and we got a ticket, and we're not allowed to bring the truck and park it on our own property, right at that same 122 Shadowlon. So what we're talking about what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience to speak? Okay. Ms. Barbara Coulson.
Give me a minute, I'm kind of nervous and I'm upset, and each time I talk about it, I think about it right now, my heart is beating so fast because of this situation. Okay, it's working, all right. Okay, my name is Barbara Coulson. I live at 212 Shadowlon Street. I'm directly behind this parking lot. I'm literally right there. The only thing between me and that parking lot is a road about as wide as that, about as wide as that wall. I'm right there. When they come through with the trucks, it's like log trucks, flatbed trucks or whatever, a lot of times they right on the sidewalk. There's a little girl that stays on the corner, she's playing on the sidewalk, and I seen the truck go right on the sidewalk where the baby playing. I get all the noise, I get it all. Seven days a week, I get it all, whatever they're doing, washing trucks, working on trucks, changing tires, it's literally like it's right in my living room. I'm right there, I get it all. They were out there one morning, 2:20, 3 o'clock in the morning, it's just noise all the time. I sit, I get up early, I sit on my porch, there's a telegram pole right there. I've seen some of those trucks come right up on that telegram pole, and it scared me so bad, I like run in the house. That's why I started calling and trying to complain, but I was there from the beginning when they cut the trees and cleaned it all up. That went on for weeks, maybe a month or more, I got all that noise. They put some orange clay down there, I guess, for the parking lot or whatever, that got mushy. Then they put a lot of washout from a cement truck, pulled all that over there, I guess, making the parking lot. But then when it's hot and it's dry and the wind blowing, I got like a desert storm. It literally covered my whole house inside and out, and all the way down the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's just bad, it's just a bad situation. It's just, it's literally too much. It's just literally too much. I'm all for somebody doing good and trying to, you know, do better, but. I'm all for somebody doing good and trying to, you know, do better, but not at my expense. I shouldn't have to deal with all that. It's just not fair to me. I'm third generation there. I'm third generation. And everything that goes there is right in my living room. I have no peace. Whatever they do is, is right in my living room. It's, it's just too much. And then I called code enforcement several times. Nobody come out, and I called a code guy named Chris out there checking on the property down the street. So he gave me a lady that called in East Palatka named Dino. I called her and told her the situation, and she called Mr. Moore. That same day, he came out and looked and saw what was going on. The parking lot is already there. Trucks are already being parked there. They're already being worked on there. It's already there. Now you're trying to get the permits and everything after you done done everything. I feel like if I would have never, would have never said anything, none would have never been trying to get done. There's no permit for the driveway to the highway. It's not complete. It's not up to code. It is just not right. It's not fair. The fence there, the guy at the restaurant said they had to put the fence there because when they wash the trucks, all the mud and stuff get on the people cars at the restaurant, you know? When something goes bad to get done, then they'll come in there and try to do it. But you should have done it in the beginning. Do it like it's supposed to be done. And there, there's no way, God knows, there's no way all those trucks should be coming through there all day long. There's no way. It just shouldn't be done. My heart is beating right now. Anytime I talk about it, I'm like, Lord, I'm gonna have a heart attack behind this. It's just that scary with all them trucks. It's like nobody was hearing me. I've been calling for months, almost a year. It's like nobody hears me. Nobody cares. It's like I'm just there by myself. Like I said, I'm right there. I'm right in it. Maybe 50 feet. The road might be 50 feet wide, and then the parking lot is right there. Like a parking lot should be that close to a residential property. I mean, that, that stuff down there, Bradleys, the distributing company, that's all commercial. But they got it closed in. And none of that stuff comes back on our side. But I get the noise, the truck, I get it all. Been getting it all. I have grandchildren. I have nieces and nephews. It's just bad. It's, it's not a good thing. Not a good thing at all.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Coulson. Oh, he has a question.
What could this gentleman do, the applicant, do to make that property be used, be able to be used for what he wants to do with it that would make you folks happy?
At this point, whatever he do, it won't work because of all the noise. It's all the noise. I don't know nothing he can do, really. I don't, because he's already done what he's gonna do. And we wouldn't have said nothing, nothing would have never been done. I believe that in my whole heart.
Right. I do know that there will be some buffers required.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Coulson.
There will be buffers required, but I, I guess, the reason I'm asking the question is there are a lot of other uses for that property that could be even worse than what, what he's asking. And I guess, what type of buffering would be required for this? I mean, standard stuff, is it not?
Currently, yeah, it'd be a Type 10, a Class A buffer, or, I'm sorry, 10-foot-wide Class A buffer. Now, we would be looking at, once it goes to Development Review Committee, we would be looking at where they're accessing from, what type of mitigation they're providing for the neighborhood adjacent. We'd also be looking at turning movements onto 19. We're looking at the parking spaces, how they're set up. They're gonna have to meet the parking requirements. So yes, I, I do believe, you know, he put the cart before the horse, but he is trying to correct that. I believe code enforcement did reach out. And so now, once it gets to Development Review Committee, we'll be taking all these things into consideration as far as site design. So, you know, we're gonna try to mitigate that neighborhood as well as possible. And if not, and they're not willing to comply, then it'll remain C3, but there won't be, you know, a parking lot there.
Is there, I'm trying to think of, I had a question when you were talking, and then I forgot about it. I'll think of it in a minute.
I have to go with this property. The requirements were you had to have a fence between you and the residential neighborhood. It had to be a non-C3 type fence. It had to be made of wood, because that's what the county required. They also made you plant vegetation. You had to have a certain amount of trees for square footage. It had to be used between the meeting and then. And that was part of the plan for residential, it makes up the residential.
Backed up the residential?
That's correct.
Yeah. Joe, in the, in the Development Review Committee, they would, he'll come up with a plan of how many vehi, is there a limit to how many vehicles can be on this property at any given time?
I mean, there, yeah, there's still gonna need to be setbacks for the parking area. We're gonna be looking at all that stuff. We, as it stands now, we don't have an engineered drawing. We don't have a conceptual plan or anything. Right now, what we're doing is just rezoning to C3 for, for those uses that would be allowed. As far as what mitigation we put in place, all these things will be taken into consideration. And we will speak with the applicant and ask if he can, and would he be willing to go above and beyond and maybe propose something here today that we can condition this rezoning to.
I have a question, Madam Chief of Mission. To the, to our staff. It sounds as if there is right now an existing business going on where there's repair of trucks, where there's parking of trucks, where there's washes of vehicles. Is there an existing business right now being conducted on this piece of property?
When I drove by the site, I saw-
Yes, it is. Yes.
I'm sorry, the-
Question through the chair.
Ma'am, the question was addressed to me. I think you don't mind.
You can sit, you can be seated, Ms. Coulson. Thank you.
In your opinion, is there an existing business in operation right now?
I saw vehicles there, and I'll take their word for it. I believe there is, they are operating out of there. Now, is the site designed, you know, for that type of use yet? Nope. Probably not.
And I continue with my question. At this stage, we, we have a problem here where these folks say there is a business going on right now that's annoying for many reasons. Not, not seeing it personally or being there to witness the noise. It's a commercial business. It looks like it is in operation right now. And for us to approve something at this stage, it sounds like we're just gonna pass it along until we get everybody caught up to what the code is. I'd rather see this thing tabled. Meet with staff, residents, get the thing worked out. Well, you don't have these kinds of problems where there's an existing business that's been established without any permits. And then have the people pay for it because we're gonna change zoning to make it all legal. So my opinion would be, set this thing down for a conference with the residents. See if it can be worked out before we bring it back. And so we can really then approve something that we know can work for the residents as well as the county.
And I respect the Commissioner. I respect the Commissioner. One thing we do need to take into consideration, this is simply a rezoning process. We're not rezoning for that type of use. We are rezoning the land. We're zoning the land which is compatible with that corridor. C3 zoning is compatible with that corridor. Now, once it gets to DRC, we would further mitigate that. If you wish to table it, staff would not be conducting community meetings. It'd be up to the applicant to have those meetings with them at some point. But as it stands here now at the planning commission, your vote should be towards the zoning classification, not the type of use that's existing out there.
Understood.
I just want to point that out, even though there isn't existing use operating out there.
Normally, at, at this stage, I would agree with the county's position that we're here to do one thing, is the land in the position to be zoned to operate under a C3. But since there is an existing business going on there that's apparently done using C3 applications that have not have been approved yet, we're putting the cart before the horse. That was my only reason for saying what I'm saying. Let's try to get it cleaned up where everybody's happy, and I think the thing can go forward.
And, and as I mentioned, we, we have conditioned this rezoning so that the repair, repair of the trucks cannot take place on that site. Repair, sales service cannot take place. It's simply for parking. If they were doing repairs out there, then it would be in violation of the rezoning, and they would be fined accordingly, so.
Okay.
For staff.
We'll call you back up in a minute. Yes, thank you.
Is, is, in your mind, in staff's mind, are there any safety issues? Is it primarily a noise issue?
Without seeing an actual site plan and seeing how they're maneuvering onto 19, now, I do see an issue with them taking access from the residential roadway. But I, I don't think Public Works, I think Public Works is gonna have a huge issue with that. Now, as far as the turning movements on the 19, you know, all department personnel, Public Works, building, we're all gonna be looking at this at Development Review Committee. So if they take issue with it, he'll have to comply or, like I said, cease the use. There are, you know, we'll be looking at buffering and mitigation of noise, what we can do to, you know, like maybe centrally, centrally locate those parking spaces. But other than that, you know, we can-
The, the county already has noise ordinances, so-
Correct.
They'd have to be operating within the limits of those ordinances.
We can further condition the use that, you know, they can only operate within certain, you know, certain times, once it gets to DRC.
Okay. The applicant, you want to come back up, Mr. Goyard?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have something else, Mrs. Coulson? Okay. We'll give her, we'll give her just a minute.
Yes, I'm, I'm, y'all talking about the trucks going in and out on that street. My street is on the Thune Street. That's the back side. That's the way they come on the sidewalk, come right up to the stop sign, right up to the telegram pole. To me, that's a safety issue.
Oh, I-
Cutting all the trees down and taking them out. I also get all the noise from the trucks and everything going down 19. I get everything. It's just like it's right in the middle of my living room.
Okay. We hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Goyard.
So I'm aware of a lot of the complaints that the community was discussing about. The first thing was the driveway. I got over $20,000 in the driveway. The front driveway that's connecting to 19, I had to get a permit from the Department of Transportation in St. Augustine. So all of that was done with permits. I took the trees out, not knowing I should have got a permit to take the trees out. I didn't finish the property. I stopped working on it because I was trying to save up more funds to get the rest of the property maintained. Of course, I was using it very little at the time. So there's a fence that I was gonna put in between the, the back street, what, what the community is complaining about, and the front, because a lot of traffic is coming in, because it's, they're using it for like a shortcut off of 19 going to the back back there. There's a lot of traffic that was been going on for the streetwalkers and the hookers and all this. This is not coming from my property. This is activity that's been going on in the community before the trucks came. I mean, it's bad. I feel like more sheriffs should patrol the area because a lot of the traffic is coming from the drug activity that's not far, right around the corner from their, their property. It really needs to be addressed. That traffic is not coming from me. Then the, so when we clean the trees out, you got 19 right there. So a lot of the noise that she wasn't hearing before is coming off of 19. This is noise that's gonna be there. You can't stop that. The noise, and then the trucks, I only have like a minimum of five trucks coming in there parking right now. A minimum, at a minimum. I don't have a bunch of traffic. If traffic is coming through, those guys that get up in the morning, they go to work, six, seven o'clock, they come back in maybe four or five o'clock. That, that property is quiet. So any traffic or noise she's hearing is coming off of 19, because I mean, it's open right now. From me cutting the trees and all. So a lot of the, for the fence line, I was gonna put a fence in the front and the back to stop the traffic and to kind of accommodate for the neighborhood in the back. I just hadn't done that because I was aware, once I got a letter from the county about the permits, I stopped working on it to make sure I got, took the proper steps to make sure I did everything right. So that's why that's not done yet. So when I got the permit, I, I talked to this gentleman here. He told me, okay, you could put the fence up by Bradley's and start doing your little thing, whatever you want to do. So that's why I put the fence up. It wasn't because I was getting a complaint. You know, me and him talked about it, and these were things that I wanted to do anyway. But I hadn't did it because I hadn't, didn't get the permit. So that's the reason why that's not done yet. That's in the process. So I apologize for the community, for the noise or whatever that I caused, and I'm working towards fixing all that, whatever we gotta do to fix it. Let's fix it, you know? These trucks, I mean, it's serving a more better purpose than a dispurpose because it's, like I said again, it's bringing goods to the community. It's a good look for the community with all the drug activity that's going on back there. I mean, I feel like we need to focus on that. If we did that, that'd cut a lot of the traffic down. That'd kill a lot of the traffic. It's like every other houses has drug activity going on back there. There's a lot of drug activity going on. The hookers she's saying that she's talking about, they're not coming from my lot, from, we dealing in hookers. They're going to the drugs airhouses in the back. That's what's going on. She might be in the house, they, they, some people don't, ain't, I'm, I see it. I know what's going on. It's a lot of drug activity in the neighborhood. We need to address that.
I think we're getting off topic from where we need to be right now. Okay.
That'll help a lot of the, the traffic. That'll stop a lot of the traffic. And I, I mean, I definitely want to put the fence up to slow the traffic down so it don't, you know, I don't want nothing, no, nothing stolen off my property or anything like that. So it's a process, and I'm getting to it, and all these things that they're addressing, I'm willing to fix that, to make the community happy, whatever I gotta do. I'm willing to do it to, to piece the community. I'm not a tough guy. I want to be part of the community. I want to help out. I want to be a good look for the community. So that's my goal. I don't mean no ill will for the community. I hope the best for everybody. That's all I want to say.
I believe we have a question, Mr. Hancock.
No, sir. My plans was to get power and water once I go through the proper permits. I haven't done any of these things that I want to do because I haven't had the permits. I haven't got the permits. Everything I've done, I was told it's okay to do it now because I've, I've requested to, for the, for the, the permit change and doing everything I'm doing. So I'm doing everything by the, by the books. I cut the trees down, not knowing I should have got a permit. I didn't know I had to have a permit to do that.
I don't think you have to have a permit for trees.
From either the, the, this, this guy here or DOT in St. Augustine.
Okay, so you got your DOT permit for your driveway off of 19?
Yes, ma'am. I have the permit.
Okay. I'm sure you'll have to give that to the-
I could have grown that with me. I, I got all that.
Okay.
That's been approved.
Any other questions while we have Mr. Goyard up here?
No.
Okay, thank you. Joe, anything you want to add? Okay. You can come, come forward real quick.
The bottom line is what does the law say? I understand he's trying to make corrections. I understand he's trying to do things right. I don't know who you are, but I understand. He said, you told him it's okay to put up a fence, and you gave him clearance- a fence, and you gave him clearance and authority, and I'd like to make sure I get your name. We've contacted a lawyer in Tampa. We're, this is, we don't want to, but I've contacted relatives, friends, that are second and third generation from this neighborhood. Number one, if it was an, I'm not saying it's a racial issue, but would this be happening in another community? Would it be happening if it was somewhere else? I hope that it would. But because we're here, we're, there's nothing, there is nothing, at this point, we're going to go through this one and all the other courses, and then, depending on that, then our counsel will be coming in, because we are not happy. Because if this is okay, I'm going to go out tomorrow on my own property, and I'm gonna put up a 10 by 10 shed that y'all told me I couldn't put up. Why would you stop? It's my property, I have the right. I didn't ask, I didn't, Mr. Gilgard, well, I didn't know. I didn't know. We went through the proper process, and I couldn't put up a 10 by 20 shed on my own property. They gave me so many things that I had to do. So, this is, if we wanna do it that way, okay. If he's okay, I should have the authority to put anything on my property, on the eight lots that I have, right on the Shattillon Street area, and not have problems from the county. Is that going to work?
I think he's here because he is having problems, so. We, we under, we understand your comments, thank you.
But, okay, so we're not gonna have it. There's nothing that can be done to go back now, because you're doing it after the fact. That's like, I stole the car, okay, what do I have to do now? No, there's a price to pay for doing what's not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have something to say? You look like you...
I can, I can list some of the uses that would be allowed in the Commercial 3.
Sure. They're part of our package.
That are allowable by right, as many warehouses, hospital, car sales and service, emergency services, lodging. And then, if you wanna look into the specialty use permits that are allowed in there, you can do heavy truck equipment, or heavy equipment sales and service, meaning repair, heavy vehicle rental and service, auto body repair shops, outdoor auction, and flea market and nightclub in a kennel. So, I mean, these uses are predominant, the zoning classification is predominant throughout this corridor, and unfortunately, this corridor butts quite a few residential subdivisions. And this is why we try to capture most of the stuff at Development Review Committee. We see the impact, it gets routed to all the appropriate departments, and we all provide comments to the applicant, which they much, they, they must address, so. I just figured I'd point that out, point that uses that are allowed in C-3, and that there are several properties along this corridor that are zoned C-3.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion among the board or motion?
I'd like to...
I've, we're, we're done with public comment for now.
I just wanna...
We're done with public comment for now. You, you can, is that right?
Yeah.
Can I take public comment still? Okay, I'll let you come up for one minute.
Where I stay directly behind this parking lot, I'm the only house in that block. There's no drug activity out there. It's not like he said, drugs all over. I spoke with DOT yesterday, with a man named Chris Poole, and he said, the permit was not complete, so to me, that mean he doesn't have it. He doesn't have it. And my front porch, I tried to put a top on my front porch to keep the sun off me, I getting wet when it's rain going in. Kinda wouldn't even let me put a top on my front porch, you know? And as far as the noise from Highway 19, it's noise from Highway 19, but it's a lot of noise for the, from those trucks, too. All of it is not Highway 19. You know, it's, it's just a big ugly mess, is what it is. And things, like I say, since we complaining, now it's trying to be done right, when it should've been done right in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I went past Mr. Gilgard's property three times today, once at 11:30, once at 2:00 on Bethune Street, 'cause I have a friend that lives at 107 Carver Street, went to visit him. When I left there, I come back on Bethune Street at 3:15, 3:20. I didn't see no activity on the property, the three times I went by, so. I mean, the trucks were gone, nobody was working on anything, the three times I went by, that I could see. So, I just, I think he needs to put a fence on the residential side, that's my opinion, because all the other businesses have their fences along there, so.
Okay. Okay, we can't have, we can't have comments from the audience. Yeah, thank you. So, any discussion among the board? Call it back for a discussion and/or a motion.
That's correct.
If I may add something, the, the buffer that is required between his parcel and the residential would be, require a six-foot-high wooden fence with landscaping.
With the landscaping, 10 feet? I'll entertain a motion or further discussion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'm gonna call for a vote, all those in favor? Oh, wait a second. Chris, can I, can I stop that vote for a second? Because I think the county had a caveat with their, that there be no, no service or repair of vehicles with their recommendation. So, can you restate your motion? Okay. Please. I would add number one to...
I believe the request would have to include the condition, am I correct, counsel? The motion would have to include that condition.
It's on page six of nine. Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I will now call for a vote on that amended motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That will go to the County Commission at their June 27 meeting. Any, let me get back to my agenda. Any old business?
I'd like to ask Joe a question. Have we heard anything else on the 55-acre property in East Palaca that was called off last me, lot, last month?
Is that the parcel, the 215-unit mobile home community?
Yes.
They held a community meeting last week, which myself and Jenny attended. There was quite a bit of opposition that showed up. I have not heard from the applicant as of yet, I don't know that they're moving forward, I know that we do not have them scheduled as, as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other old business? New business? Then I will call for a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion. A motion to approve and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Then a motion to adjourn will be entertained. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.